It is 7:00 on Thursday, May 13th. We will now call to order the regular city council meeting for the city of Albernett. First item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll please rise and put your flag on the wall. I pledge allegiance to the founding of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Clerk, if you'll do a roll call, please. Counselor White?
Here.
Counselor Shawn?
Here.
Counselor Bozenberg?
Here.
Counselor Trump?
Here.
Please let the record reflect that Councilman Menzun is absent, but we have a forum to conduct business tonight. And clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
On your new business, I missed one, the bullet point designation, but other than that, no official changes, just an administrative change in the lettering after the tie down.
Okay. Perfect. So with that, I will seek approval of the agenda. Moved by Schatz. Seconded by Trump. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. That we come to our sheriff's report. No recognizes.
Hello, Scottie Schmidt here again. They sent you guys the email. Just little change, they're not contending hours past what you guys contracted anymore, so I want to be able to tell you our total hours. We'll just say hours met. So we met your hours last month, and we had 32 calls for service. Any questions?
Not for me, anyone?
Here, is any uterus?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Keep saying yep, thank you.
All right. With that, we will move on to the public hearing on the proposal to enter into a general obligation refunding loan agreement. So the public hearing is officially open at 7:02. This being the time and place specified for taking action on the proposal to enter into a general obligation refunding loan agreement in a principal amount not to exceed $275,000. I will recognize the clerk and ask if there are any written objections placed on file.
There are none.
There are none. Hearing that there are none, I ask if there are any written or oral objections from our public. Any questions from the public on the public hearing for the general obligation? All right, hearing none. We hereby close the public hearing at 7:03. So with that, I would seek a motion to introduce Resolution 052021-01. Moved by Bozenberg.
Sorry.
Seconded by Trump. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We need roll call. But you always let me go through the whole thing first.
Counselor Trump?
Aye.
Counselor Bozenberg?
Aye.
Counselor Shawn?
Aye.
Counselor West?
Aye.
Let the record reflect that the motion has. Are we good on that, then?
We are good.
We are good. We'll move on to the mayor's report. The only thing I have this month, I'd just like to thank our staff. It's been a very busy month, there've been a lot of things going on. We've buttoned up the fire station, it's spring, so there's a lot of projects and things in town. Budget was certified, so thank you everyone that helped on that. It's just been a busy month, so I appreciate you guys holding on to port and always doing a great job. With that, I'll move on to council reports, and I'll start to my right with Counselor Trump.
I have nothing.
My turn.
Your turn.
I'd like to thank the party for when I've attended the open house. I thought it was well done. You had a lot of participation from the people. I have no idea how many people were there, but there was a big crowd when I was there.
Yeah, we talked about it after, we should have kept count of what we did.
But I just thought it was well done.
Thank you.
They deserve a thanks. That's all I have.
Counselor West?
No.
All right. At this time, we'll move into citizen comments. There are two types of comments in the city of Albernett. We have those agenda-related items and non-agenda-related items. If you're on the agenda, you will wait until your agenda item to speak, so this would not be the time for that. But if you do have any other comments on agenda-related items, please state your name and address clearly for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to speak. So this time, I will recognize citizen comments for agenda-related items. Hearing none. Are there any comments for non-agenda-related items? Written reports. Chief Graham.
I get her a bill for the fire chiefs, things we mailed in, Iowa Fire Chiefs Association. And then I have a bill for, we bought a computer, you guys could use paper, one of them, this is the chief one, too, for 2399. That's all I have. I don't know if you'll do the bunker here this month or next month, I got a bit late, it's no big deal.
I got a question about that, Steve. Is this the five sets of bunker gear that we talked about in November? Has it never gotten ordered, or is this another?
These are four sets, and there's two, possibly two more, but they're very inactive, so I just kind of wait on them to see, gone by a year, then they never show up again. But these last four would cover the whole department sector, those two there are kind of inactive. So this would cover it all.
So we're all up just?
But I don't know. Is this from the ones, did you order the ones in November? This is addition, or is these the ones that we talked about in November?
These are the ones we talked about, budget time, we applied more to get.
So it sounds like it's different.
I didn't order them in November, I was ordering them this time of year.
Okay, so, but we did discuss this before.
But this will be next year's budget, because it takes two months.
Right. So these are the ones we talked about in November?
Yes.
For next year's budget.
Next year. Thank you.
Yes.
No, I'm sorry.
Now we're both.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Any other questions for the chief?
Do you want to say that? Do you want to say your voice for the committee? Or can we say what time it's due?
I thought we already did it last meeting, because we put TGR.
Oh, we overtalked you.
Let's check back and put it all the time straight.
Wasn't there up to a certain dollar amount?
I'm pretty sure so.
Yeah, I think it's right at 400, I believe.
Yeah, they've done get claims for give.
Who gets paid for, you bought it already?
That'd be the fire social.
Okay.
But it's, I mean, it's not like a rush. We did get on, in our bill, except to decline.
What's the verdict on the bunker gear? Do we want to make a motion tonight, or wait until next meeting? Motion from Bozenberg for the purchase of four more sets of bunkers here.
All set.
Set from Schatz. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, chief. Public works.
Two things that have kind of popped up just today, and I've been discussing this first one for a while with a couple of residents. We've got about three residents who are, who are after sump pump inspections, pumping their sump water out into the street, because that's really the only place they have to go to it, but in the wintertime is creating ice issues, one worse than the other two, but all three are creating ice. I spoke with Councilman Menzun a little bit, and he let me know that Marion has sump pump waivers in those scenarios where they'll let that person put it back in the sewer just for the winter, when it's freezing, and then it has to come back out as soon as the weather turns. I guess I wouldn't be opposed. The one, it runs across an intersection, and it does create a problem. Joe knows which one I'm talking about. Just to put on your radar, that I'll investigate that unless you tell me today, or get it, we don't want to deal with that. I don't think it's going to be a Hendrick sewer, sewer system to have three pumps during the winter when they aren't running much. It's not going to boost our numbers enough to cause us a headache, so. But we'll have to develop a waiver, we'll have to figure out some kind of document for them to sign, and us to sign, saying that you agree to, you know, put it into the sewer when appropriate and take it out, subject to our scrutiny. So that's just something I wanted to put on the radar. The other thing, I got a call from the DNR today after I submitted my monthly operating report on the wastewater, and I have never tested for pH, even though it said in our old permit and in our new permit that we need to test for pH. There's no pH tester here, period, and probably my fault for not looking into that a little deeper. I always wonder why that's not happening, or why our lab's not doing it well. They clarified today that pH has to be taken within 15 minutes of the sand, so it has to be done on-site. The lab can't do it, because by the time we get it to lab, it's out of time. I asked the DNR why, they never said anything to us over the past eight years I've been doing this, and they said, "Well, we're just really kind of starting to crack down on that stuff." So it makes it sound like we're not alone in this, so I'll be starting to look into this. We actually drawdown is basically complete now for the spring, so we won't have to do anything till fall, but that's probably another $400 to $800 meter, depending on which one we get. And then each of the two drawdown periods, we have to, it has to be calibrated every time, so there's about a $30 or $40 calibration kit that has to be purchased to get it calibrated. It's not a huge deal, but just wanted to throw that out there, too, so you knew it's coming down the pike, and they are going to start cracking with it, so we will have to do it, there's no fighting. Other than that, any questions on the report?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And to your clerk.
I do not do urban work, so I'm just here at your disposal of your questions or concerns at any time. Thank you.
I do know two things we had recurring on Danielle's report were nuisance and sidewalk payments, and both of those on the agenda, so we'll address those later. All right. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any changes or bills to be added?
There are not.
Perfect. So with that, I will seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Schatz.
Sorry.
Seconded by West. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. With that, we come to the new business, 12A, Board of Adjustments Report. Unfortunately, we not see our representative.
He was going to set an alarm to be here, and it's really close to the time we told him to be here, so maybe we can shuffle.
We can come back to that for sure. So we'll move on to 12B, which is urban chickens, and I will recognize Cecilia Smith.
Hi.
Hello.
I sent just a short letter for the council members to review ahead of time, but I'm not exactly sure which ordinance specifically talks about the current rules for having chickens in town, as in having a handful of chickens to keep for eggs and such. I am under the understanding, though, that it's currently not allowed, so I just wanted to come and ask you guys to revisit that rule, maybe consider allowing a small amount of specifically hens rather than roosters for townspeople to be able to keep in their It's a sustainable thing to do, it's cost-effective for my fam, excuse me, for my family. So, yeah, that's kind of just where I wanted to start, is asking if that ordinance could be reviewed and possibly changed.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
So for council, you were provided with a copy of the animals ordinance. We recently redid that ordinance in order to address a few inconsistencies, and Cecilia's correct, it's not, chickens are not explicitly disallowed, they're also not explicitly allowed, so that is something that needs clarification, I think, one way or the other, but it would be in the animal ordinance is where we would do that. This has come up before, and I know it's something that council kind of put back just the interest in town, so just so you know, for us to change an ordinance, and additionally, we did look at some other towns that do allow chickens, and there's just procedures and documentation, as well as enforcement that goes into that. There's a cost to the city to redo any kind of ordinance, it has to go through our attorney as well as publication and all those types of things, so it's definitely something I'd want to make sure there's enough interest in town in order to get that done.
Okay.
So do you know if anyone else is interested in?
Right off the top of my head, I know of one other couple in town that has stopped and, I think, talked about it. So as the ordinance stands now...
So generally, if chickens are allowed, there's an ordinance that specifically allows them, it limits the number, it kind of, it gives regulations on the coop size and all that kind of stuff. We don't have the, our animal ordinance also does not specifically say they're not, so I would lean towards, without the specifications of what is allowed, that they're not currently allowed.
Okay.
But again, I would advise council that we need to clarify that ordinance one way or the other for that direction, but it's a valid question. So council, have any questions?
I'd like to table this until we can find out how much interest there may be, how much interest there is.
Okay, so...
And if you come in here with 70 people, I'm sure we're going to be a lot more than just one.
Okay.
Sure, I'll address, sorry.
Oh, yeah, 226 Main Avenue.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? So yeah, I guess we just kind of be looking for if there's more interest, I don't know if you could get a petition going and talk to people, or, you know, put it out on social media, just get it going.
Yeah, I can definitely post it on the Facebook page, I'm not going to lie, I don't talk to a lot of people in town, I don't think they have any idea who I am, so, yeah, I can definitely post it on the Facebook page and hopefully get a little bit more of a response. So I'll go from there. Is it necessary for those people to attend the meeting? Can I put together just a simple list of people who said?
Yeah, we don't, we don't need them to turn up.
Okay.
We participate in social media to a certain extent, so it'd just be nice to get a temperature within town. Again, it's an investment for us, and we'd like to know we're making it for, you know, that common purpose.
Okay.
I would think if anybody's really interested, they would take time to come to the meeting.
All right. Well, I will kind of leave it to you, if you want, I mean, just call to get back on the agenda when you're kind of ready to, when we've got more information on what that interest is.
Yeah.
Perfect.
All right.
All right, anything else on chickens? All right. 12C, animals at large, we will recognize Artis Smith.
Well, I don't want to step on anybody's toes, but I don't like cats and dogs in my garden. I put up a fence two foot high, they still get, the cats still get at it. What is the cat ordinance?
It's a very good question. So this does come back again to our animal ordinance, which was provided. Part of that is, we do not allow animals at large, so animals are not allowed to run. I will just say, and we've run into this recently, enforcement can be difficult, especially with cats, because ownership can be hard to prove, whereas dogs generally have the collar and the rabies tags. But there definitely is an ordinance about animals at large. I don't know how to, where to go from here.
I lived in town here for 65 years, and I've never had any problem until just the last couple, three years.
Do you have any idea who the owner of the cat is?
Yes, I do.
You can...
Because they let them out, and they come over to my garden, and they let them back in the house, and I can see it.
Perfect. So you can definitely notify Danielle with the name, and we'll make sure that they receive a letter that they're in violation of that ordinance.
If you wish, send the sheriff up to talk to them. Tell them that they love such and such ordinances, not supposed to be out on leash, and have a, have a talk to them.
They're pretty smart cats, they go right up the road and start dating.
There probably isn't such a thing as a dog cat.
Hey, Artis, we need it for the record, what's your address?
I do. 249 North Mahan Street for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I usually take care of them until you shoot the baby gun into town.
Well, I was also going to add, so the Cedar Valley Humane Society is our animal control officers, so we have, I have personally called about loose dogs before, and they do recommend that you trap them first, contain them in some way, just so they're not coming out here chasing them, so.
Well, I'm going to...
You contain the cats, you're welcome to hand them over to the humane society, and they'll take care of it from there.
I'm going to start trapping them, my traps going out in the morning, because I'm going to start trapping them, and they're going to go for a ride.
To the humane society.
Well, I don't know if they'll make it that far.
You might want to remind him what the huge ones, the humane society costs every time you go down there.
Although we refuse, we've made it our policy to refuse those charges, so.
So then if a person wants to get their animal back that's been taken?
Yeah.
And he gets $185?
I think if these people know, if they love their cats that much, if they know this what it would cost them to get it back, they might do a little something, too.
Yep. So yeah, definitely, give their information to Danielle, we'll make sure they get a letter that they're in violation of that ordinance, and we'll have options.
And one of them, they went up the sidewalk all winter long, up to his house and back to his shop.
Giving directions to the humane shelter.
I'll get to that.
Thank you for coming in.
Thanks, Artis.
Anything else on cats in the other comments?
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. All right, we're going to jump back to 12A, we have our representative from the Board of Adjustments, so they had a variance request at 131 Roosevelt Street, so.
Yeah, we had a meeting last night and gave consideration to a couple items there. One was the orientation of the school, and we decided that anything along the, as you're facing, from Roosevelt to building, anything that's on the right side of that building is actually a side yard. The back of the property would be move hard, and so, though there is a portion with the auditorium that is north-facing, that's still considered outward part of the side. And so, and the, and the space around that should be treated accordingly. That passed by a vote of Port 1. And then the request for variance on the height of the auditorium there, it is going to come in at about just under three feet over the, what is in code, and so we went ahead and approved that variance by a vote of three to two.
Are there any questions from council? At this point, just so you know, with the Board of Adjustments, our only action, should we choose to take any, would be to ask them to go back and do further study on the issue, but beyond that, their decision stands. So are there any questions, discussions? Hearing none, thank you for your time and service, and also, just for the record, you were appointed as chairperson for that board as well?
I hope that speaks to the level of leadership that's on there.
Highly, highly speaks.
We're all equal, I raised my hand.
Just scratch your nose, and that wasn't that important. Really.
Get the new guy.
Thank you, Chris.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. 12D, liquor license for ACDC temporary event permit. Do we have that one for me?
No, that one is still waiting for tram shop insurance, so that one needs to be tabled, please.
Are you here for something else, then, Ryan, or do you want to say?
For the approval of the benefit days.
Old business.
Oh, old business, okay, I didn't read that far ahead. All right, so we're tabling 12D.
We can do cigarette, one candy.
We have to do, yeah, 12D is the liquor license for lefties.
I don't have anything for that either. The Iowa ABD implemented a new system online, and it is not yet complete, apparently, and it's very not user-friendly, user-unfriendly, so I couldn't print anything out. I can log in online and show it to you, it's just the renewals, which has been an administrative action, so they continue to do their business.
But as far as you know, everything's in order, they're ready for renewal.
Correct, yeah, it's just an issue with the website process on the state.
Well, knowing that, and leaving it that the state will get the information that they need, I will seek a motion to approve the liquor license renewal for Lefty's Convenience Store. Moved by Bozenberg.
Second.
Seconded by West. Any discussion?
Did you, I'm confused here.
She couldn't print it.
I understand. Who was the one that didn't have a tram shop?
The ACDC, they're getting a temporary permit.
That's where I wanted to go.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We need tobacco permit for lefties. Again, this is a renewal, this is in your packet. If there are no questions, I would seek a motion to approve the tobacco permit renewal for Lefty's Convenience Store. Moved by Schatz.
Sorry.
Seconded by Trump. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, next, we need to set, we need a motion to set a public hearing on ordinance 2021-1, amending our Code of Ordinances for the provisions pertaining to flood plain management. So we talked about this at the last meeting, the DNR has sent us some updates. Danielle included a draft in the packet, there have been a few changes since then, we had it reviewed by another party, there are minimal changes. We are not adopting this tonight, we are simply setting the public hearing. We do have a looming deadline of July 20th, that this needs to be adopted, so we'll make sure that we stay on top of it. So with that, I would like to set the public hearing for June 10th, which is our next regular meeting. So I would seek a motion to set a public hearing on June 10th for ordinance 2021-1.
So moved.
Moved by Trump.
Definitely.
Seconded by Bozenberg. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Did you need roll call? You good?
All right.
All right, 12H, Public Works Dump Truck Body Replacement. We'll recognize Mr. Trump.
This, we talked about this at budget time, about should we replace the dump truck soon, the entire machine, or maybe upgrade the box and spreader, and it's become a little bit more of an issue. We haul one load of inch roadstone, which is gravel, the other day, and broke the back corner of the box that's on it again, for the third year.
inch roadstone, which is gravel, the other day and broke the back corner of the, of the box that's on it again for the third time. So I don't have it fixed yet. I will get it fixed no matter what, but it's hard to find somebody to weld on aluminum. I struggled the first few times and I think the same guy is gonna do it again. But we're in this position of I can't use it now. And I think I told you before budget time, it really is the wrong kind of box for what we're doing. It's a landscaper's box. I can't even haul sand because the tailgate doesn't close completely. Unless I stuff a bunch of rags and stuff in the bottom of the tailgate. I feel like maybe we should move that. I'm comfortable that the truck is okay yet. And just as a budgetary number, I got a quote from Futureline for forty-five hundred dollars to replace it with a steel dump body with a tailgate sander instead of a slide-in sander, which would be hugely more convenient for us as well. If I have to haul snow, we have to take the sander out of the truck. With a tailgate sander, you just pop the tailgate down and haul snow, leave the sander on. Also, a tailgate sander spreads the sand off of the driver's side of the, of the truck. Currently, I have to make the two passes each direction on the street and then I have to come back and sand it because if I'm trying to sand on my last pass, I'm over practically on top of the curb and I'm not getting any sand in the center of the road. So I have to make it just with the blade up, make another pass to sand with a tailgate sander. I should be able to sand on that last pass when I have the, you know, when I'm clearing the last of the snow because the sander would be more to the center of the lane. There's all kinds of advantages to having a steel box, steel dump box. Right now, when we haul anything, we have to unlatch the tailgate and set it down to dump the box. A regular dump body has a trip lever by the driver's door. You can reach out the window and trip the lever. We don't haul a lot, but it makes it a whole lot more efficient, et cetera. The hoist is good yet. We can reuse the hoist. I think the truck has some years left in it without any doubt. So I feel like it's some, a direction we may be able to think about going. Just looking for approval to get some quotes from multiple places, so.
Are there any trade-in values in that or not?
I don't know. I'd have to ask about trade-in. The sander probably has value. That landscape body maybe has some value. But it's pretty beat up after the incident with the Skidwater Bucket last winter, getting dropped on the one side. It's kind of bent up. And then the break on the back corner three times now. I mean, yes, it has a little value. The box may have to be sold on dump deals or something like that. But the sander is still working fine. It is stainless steel. There's really nothing wrong with it. Just not terribly convenient. It should have decent value, so. And it's kind of the right time, too. It's, it's not a hot ball or anything. It's a desirable sander.
Do you have any idea what it's gonna cost to fix it this time to use it?
It's only a couple hundred dollars, you know, but I'm.
I was just wondering whether we might try to buy this steel box right away or?
Oh, no, we could get by until next fiscal year. I mean, I would want it replaced before we hit next winter. But on the flip side, if that corner broke home a load of gravel, even if we haven't fixed it again, how many loads of rock do we get to haul before it snaps off again, you know, and then?
And looking at what we've got in the fishers budget, we should be able to.
Gotcha.
That's my point.
So, okay, so I should get my rear gear, get some quotes in, and then you guys could decide which side of the fiscal year.
I would like to see you do that before you spend any more money than.
Right.
Or else by fixing this, it's gonna get us some more trade-in value.
Well, yeah, I think it needs to be fixed. A couple hundred dollars is gonna make the box a whole lot more saleable, no matter what.
Do you wanna get it fixed in or what?
I'll just, I'll work on getting some quotes in and try and find out value. I guess this is just pulling it out of thin air, but I would hope to think that spreader's still worth a thousand or fifteen hundred dollars, the one we have, so.
So we're just putting the grates in it, too.
Yeah, putting the grates in it and it is, it is working fine. You know, that part is not an issue.
You were kinda talking forty-five hundred. Is that just the box or was there a sander?
That's the box, box with the tailgate sander and then, and mounted. That's, that's the labor.
Ready to take to work.
That's ready to take to work, you know. Then again, it could go another year, but the, I'm gonna have to pull the plow for that truck apart because I noticed the last snow that there's a lot of play where the, where the pivot is, you know, it's a trip plow. It folds over the, the big bolts. Lee was backing it up and we had the blade caught a little bit on the edge of the concrete and I could see that move. Could be easy fix, but again, that blade is tenure. It's plowed a lot of snow. And I already have broke the other pivot point where it hit it side to side and had to have that replaced. So that could be something to think about, too, as a new plow, but.
You want to get an estimate on that, too?
Okay. Yeah, yeah, nothing else?
You can have it related.
Yep, okay. Will do. That's all I have. You got any questions?
Would we be able to use that box for future trucks?
The box we buy now?
If we were getting one we replaced yet.
Yeah, if we buy a similar truck, sure, absolutely, yeah. It should, you know, if you went to a larger truck or different kind of chassis, then you might have some time, but.
Don't think you need anything from us to just start researching.
No, I just wanted to, basically your blessing to start the process.
Okay. All right. With that, we move to old business and the first item on the agenda is ECI-COD with the capital improvement plans we will recognize here.
I need to be here without a mask. So as you're aware, we've been working with you and with a committee of the city council and city staff to develop two-year goals for the city council and city staff and then also a five-year capital improvement plan. And so what we have here is a draft document based on the input that we got and then the work that we did with the council of the, the committee of the council. And so I want to just walk you briefly through this document and I'm gonna start on page five. And on page five, we outlined the process that we went through. And you might remember that it started back in January. We did a survey where we just collected ideas from the entire council and staff with respect to both what was going on in your environment, what were you seeing out there in terms of opportunities or external threats? And then also what you thought were important goals for the city and, and what some important investments might be for the city moving forward. From that, we analyzed that data. We worked with the committee of the city council to really take those ideas and put them into goal statements. Then we returned back to the city council with those goal statements and said, help us prioritize these, which you did. And then we, as EC-COD, took those priorities. We did a draft plan. We came back and worked with the committee one more time and asked them if we were on the right track. We got their feedbacks, changed some things. We also identified some timelines for the goals and then also some champions. And so we're kind of here today to share the draft document with everybody so that everybody has a chance to review it and to give a final round of feedback. Hopefully, we're on the right track so that you can potentially adopt this in June. And I will say that this is a plan so that by adopting it, you're not locking yourself into anything. Plans change, you know, things will change in the future. You'll need to make adjustments and that's fine. And so you can see on page six, we have just the results of the environmental scan, the things that really resonated with you, made you proud in your community, what you saw, some future opportunities, the future threats. And then on page seven, we start with those city goals. And so you'll see here that we've divided those goals based on the prioritization and the feedback from the committee into what were tier one goals, the things that are super important. And then tier two goals, things that you thought you could get done, but maybe weren't quite as important as those tier ones. For each goal, you're gonna see a champion identified. Now, some of you weren't part of this process.
To spread the wealth, though.
Your peers volunteered you, but I'm sure they're open to your feedback. And then also a timeline of when you're hoping to get that work done. With respect to champions, the champions aren't necessarily gonna do this work by themselves or not work with others. To us, the champion just means the person that's gonna be kind of accountable for making sure that things move forward and progress is made and keeping the group abreast of kind of what's going on.
And those timelines are fiscal year, correct?
Yes, these timelines are fiscal year. And so then on page eight, you'll just see a kind of a graph that shows some of the results of your survey. And this is more just for informational purposes. I also included attachments that just give the council member, council member prioritization data in case those of you who weren't part of the committee wanted to see that. And so then that's really it for the goals portion. And we set the goals up as being two years, starting with the next fiscal year, so fiscal year twenty-two and fiscal year twenty-three. The next part of this is your capital improvement plan. And so again, this is sort of your opportunity to plan for significant expenses. And in the case of Auburnette, we decided a significant expense was more than three thousand dollars. And these tend to be one-time expenses. They're usually related to infrastructure or equipment. And when we worked with the committee and we had kind of researched your, your past capital expenditures, we sued a general levy support of a hundred thousand dollars would go towards capital improvement projects each year. Now, based on your financial condition in any given year, you know, maybe that will be higher, maybe that will be lower. Again, this is just a plan. This is our best guess based on what we know today. And so then you can see in each table, we have each fiscal year. And so you already have budgeted for your fiscal year twenty-two expenses. So this is going out to fiscal, starting with fiscal year twenty-three. So we have a list of projects. We have the funding source, whether that's being supported by the general levy, general obligation or GO bond, if it's something that would be supported by the utility fund. Or if there's some other revenue source that could come into play and other revenue sources might be a grant. Or it might be the American Rescue Plan Act funds, which you're receiving. So that could be an eligible expense for those funds. And so we've done that for five years. We tried to include notes with respect to grants and what, which grants would potentially apply. And then starting on page eleven, we provided a little bit more detail on each of those grants. We knew that was of particular interest to you, that you really wanted to know where the opportunities might be. And I do think you have some great opportunities, both for your fire department, but then also for that park that you're talking about, as well as being able to use the American Rescue Fund, Plan Funds. On page seven, we gave you a little summary of kind of how those American Rescue Plan Funds can be used based on what you know today. There's still information coming down. I know that there will be training on this next week and we'll participate in that. If there are any changes, we'll make sure that you, this document gets changed to reflect those changes. And then the last item we had here were just our general recommendations. And so for us, we think we, you know, we hate to spend all this time and effort and create a plan and just have it get filed away somewhere and, you know, dusty. So we think it's really important to kind of pull this plan out once a quarter and see how you're doing and, and report out on where you're at with respect to your goals. That would be our recommendation. We actually do that ourselves as an organization. We would also recommend that you review and update the CIP every year. It's part of your budget process and that's pretty easy to do. And we're happy to come in if you just feel like you need a little extra facilitation to make that happen. Our third recommendation is that our recommendations for the CIP did not include money that would go towards sort of ongoing concrete and road repair, the pothole patching and all that fun stuff the guy gets to do. So we, we would recommend that you make sure that you're setting aside some funds in your regular operational budget to make sure that you still have capacity to do those types of items. Our fourth recommendation was to make sure you're monitoring and using that fund, those funds that are available through the American Rescue Plan. And so from what we're seeing, the biggest opportunity for you is with respect to the water sewer utility. And those funds do have to be used by the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-four. So you may want to consider advancing some items on your CIP if they are eligible for those ARP funds just to make sure that you're using up your available dollars. So right now, for example, assuming that water meter replacement is an eligible expense, we have that spread out over five years. Well, if you're not using up all those funds, you may want to make sure in twenty twenty-four that you're getting the last, you know, batch of water meters out of there. We know it's been on your goal list to develop an equipment inventory for your Public Works and Fire Departments. I think that's a great idea, too. That's gonna help you keep track of things and it will make the CIP planning process easier. And then lastly, we had discussed potentially updating your comprehensive plan, just recognizing that you're very close to the metro area. You're gonna be seeing some growth lately and it's gonna be prepared for that. And I think the other attachment I included was just an overview of that, the American Rescue Plan Act and how those funds can be used. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. It was delightful working with you. And we will be taking your feedback on this and maybe hopefully define a lot of the adjustments and we hope that, we hope that it proves itself.
I definitely want to thank you and your staff for putting up with all of our questions and changes. And you guys were fantastic and for the committee that helped and jumped in on that and volunteer others for things. That's what I spend the delegates. So I appreciate everyone that was involved, that deeply helped. Something pretty solid that we can work from.
And we work with a lot of communities and a lot of councils and I think just helping with the work that we've done here, that you guys work really well together. And that's the sort of thing that takes you very places, so good to see you.
Any questions? There's no action tonight, but I think we're hoping to adopt this by next meeting. Is that the hope, Danielle? Is that your understanding as well? Perfect. So as you read through it, take it home. If you see anything you'd like changed or if you want to take on more responsibilities, just let us know.
I've got a short presentation ready. On a pickleball court, I've got a two minute, fifteen second presentation just to show people what it's about. Because you have, may have an opportunity to get some money to put them in, to help put them in if we did went that way. So I wanted to get, I went online, got a video to show people what it's about. A lot of people don't know what pickleball is and so. Go ahead if you want, Ryan. If you're not coming through. This is, this is the type of playing field you have and it isn't very, I think they give the dimensions on here. They're not very big. There's like two of them in a tennis court, two playing fields.
Twenty-two by forty-four, I think I looked up.
Something like that. Yeah. And then you play two people or one people.
It's a small footprint comparative to a tennis court or?
To a tennis court, yeah. No, and that's, no, it's not very big. So a lot of people, I mean, you can play in your sandals. You can play. You know, older people can play because you don't have to run very far. And like that spot in front of them, that long rectangle, that's a zone that you can't get in. And if you cross in it, then, you know, the other team gets a point. It's a, it's a fairly, it's a really fun game. We got to play it out in Colorado. And it's getting to be more popular all the time. Yeah. And just some of the rules. You can go on. If you go on, just go pickleball. For some reason, we don't have the sound, which we did because it made a big difference. For some reason, we don't have the sound, which we did because it made a big difference. I don't know who does. Cedar Rapids is putting a bunch of them in. I was in an office, doctor's office today, and they were talking, and the older people were talking about the pickleball courts and stuff. So I just wanted to, you know, with her, I haven't an opportunity of maybe getting some money for it, if that might be something we could look at and pursue. You could have in-town tournaments and that kind of stuff because it's, and it's very, very cheap to get into. I mean, you can go from $20 to $100 paddles, but that's what you want, but you don't have to have anything other than that. And it's like a wiffle ball. And you have different ones, one, a ball for inside or outside, so depending where you're at. Because it's got a certain amount of holes like a wiffle ball. So you, the object is to hit it hard. Anyways, there it is.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry about the sound.
I heard the video played, but I forgot about the sound, sorry.
Oh, yeah. Like I say, just go into pickleball, and there's tons of information on it.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for this.
Appreciate it. 13B, AC/DC Benefit Days.
So Ryan Young, President of AC/DC. We brought it to your attention, I believe in March, about having benefit days, and this year we're planning to do it a little different. We're going to have it up at the Ball Diamond, the AC/DC Diamond. I did have Chester, Casconi, and Avery went around and talked to a lot of the neighbors up there, and they did not have any real concerns. The most that they had was like the traffic and litter. So parking, we informed them that both the streets up there, Naylor and Third, will both be closed, so they won't be able to park on those streets. They'll be able to drive down Third to get to the parking behind the ball field. Other than that, they won't be able to park on either one of those streets. And the litter, just pretty much like we do every year, we just, we keep the streets clean like we do out here. So as for, you know, the neighbors up there, there was no concern really about us moving up there. A lot of, actually, they said a lot of people kind of wondered why we didn't have it up there to begin with, and why we're having it down here. But I sent you, I don't know, you got it in their packet, the copy for liability, our insurance liability. We are covered all year round if we have it up there. So our insurance covered that. And then for the security, I emailed our security company that we had last year, and they have not gotten back to me yet. But other than that, I don't know what else you guys needed or...
So just another quick reminder, because I think we have two applications in here, because one's for the parade, because that's a different street closure.
Yep.
And that'll be the same route that's been used in years past.
Correct.
And then the, so you can tell the difference by the hours. So the hours of use on one is from 10:30 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. That's for the whole event. And then there's one from 10:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. If you don't look closely, they look the same. That's just for the parade. Any questions from council?
Hopefully we don't get six inches of rain in the night.
Right. That would not be good.
No.
Hearing no questions, I would seek, because I think we tentatively approved for you to move ahead with planning. So I would seek formal approval for the special event permit for AC/DC for benefit days on August 7th. Moved by West? Second by Bozenberg? Any further discussion?
Now we need to make sure you get your security.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Ryan, will we have you, just one quick thing, because I think a lot of people are just wondering, what's going on with the diamond? How's it coming?
We just actually, yesterday, got it leveled off, built up, built to grade, leveled off. And today I put lion fertilizer out there. Tomorrow, we are going to drag it and then seed it.
So I can schedule the tournament next week?
Might have to lift the grass for a little while, but we're hoping to have it all done, the bathrooms and everything done by benefit days. We may not have a dugout up there because of the price of lumber right now, but yeah, it'll be usable. Yeah, we have a tent.
Well, being a softball slash baseball coach, I will say it is sorely missed, so I'd be excited to have it available for the community again. So we appreciate everything you can do.
Working as hard as we can, as quick as we can, as, hopefully Mother Nature cooperates with us, and we'll have it going by the end of this year.
Awesome, yeah. Right next to me, so get that seed going.
Yep.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
13C, motion to set the public hearing date for FY21 budget amendments. Danielle, do you have anything to add?
This is in your packet. We made the motion to set the public hearing for today at the last meeting, and I missed the publication date in the paper, so I apologize. Just moving it forward a month.
Same amendments, totally?
Yeah, no changes.
Perfect. I would seek a motion to set a public hearing date for the FY21 budget amendments for June 10th. Moved by Trump. Second by Schatz. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. 13B, Fire Station Community Room Rental Policy. This is something I promised we'd have to do by this meeting. Danielle and I have gone through and put together what we feel is a pretty solid rental agreement. We borrowed from a few others, so they've been vetted by city attorneys across the region. Definitely encompasses a lot of situations and contingencies and all those types of things, but I'd love to see that room available for our community to start using. And there's a question, yes, sir?
Inside of the thing said bubbles are permitted. Is that outside, inside?
That would be inside.
Inside, okay.
If that's something you want to strike, we can definitely do that. That is one thing that we did discuss, and my take on it is that they're mostly so open they would clean up, but...
I didn't know about capacity for the room. They said to check with the fire chief, fire code laws. So I don't know if you have any thoughts or weigh in on that, on the room capacity?
I thought it was in the architect plan, wasn't it?
I want to say like 50 or 75 or something.
Yeah, I think, and then we, we can find that out, I'm sure, that, that shouldn't be hard, because they go off of the same code that you would have to look up to, to put that together.
You probably asked Ron, probably, because he has a couple of them.
Yeah, and that's where we kind of got 75, not seating for 50 already in this.
Yeah, that was a guess, based on when we were there for the fire department dinner, just having the tables out, you're trying to feel for...
I think that sounds right.
We didn't have, we had something in here about cleaning, so I did get a copy of Center Point's cleaning checklist, which is included. You can change it and edit it if you like to. Obviously, the map isn't all around, but I just put it up here. And then they started doing the COVID-19 waiver. I'm not sure if that would be necessary, but I put it in there as well.
As for the fees, I base that off of other similar spaces in the area. So the law park has the, I can't remember what they call it, like the amphitheater type area with the building, the arts center building. They have several rooms for rent that are of similar size, as well as the Topville Legion, and a few others in the area that have the kitchenettes and the other amenities to go along with it. So that's where those numbers came from, to just kind of keep us in line with others in the area.
Their chancellor, department, can review that before you.
That be a good idea?
Maybe, seeing as what you kind of, I saw what's going to happen up there.
It essentially, yeah, it just outlines the liabilities, the cleanup, but yeah, absolutely.
And we decide it was going to be responsible. Make sure it's clean property and all that.
Yeah, so that is the, whoever rents it, it is their responsibility, and that's what Danielle said, we'll have the checklist that we provide them, and then...
He's going to review the checklist.
Right, so that will have to decide when and who.
Did you volunteer, just now?
No.
And then we'll need time to go after and make sure that our stuff's not laying around or whatever.
Yeah, if you don't normally drop anything in that meeting room, I mean, we're going to definitely make sure the doors are all locked to...
Oh, yeah, I understand that, but sometimes we...
Spread out, training material, yeah. No, that's fine. We'll just need to figure out a calendar menu that you can access, that you can get some kind of notification that, hey, it's rented for May 1st, you know?
Actually, there's no dishes out there, yeah, I think there's a place, if there are, or something. Discuss that, do what, can't be used.
Yeah, I think some of that's covered in here.
Some of it is, it says if they use anything they have to... They have to replace it. Some of that's covered. You know there's a vacuum.
There is a mop, but it's nowhere near that building or that room.
So given that the, and also the association about those things, given that the city would be getting revenue from these rentals, I would suggest the city purchase any supplies that would be needed for cleaning, maybe a cabinet to keep them in, that type of thing, so we can work through all of that. But I wouldn't expect the association to put that forward.
Just a quick question. So how much revenue actually goes to the city and how much goes to the fire station?
So the city is responsible for the building and the insurance and everything that goes with it. Technically, the city's responsible for the fire station as well. They operate their own association for extra things like their computers, but we're responsible, the city's responsible for all the gear and the trucks and the building and all those types of things. So 100% of the revenue would come back to the city. So definitely something, there may be some tweaks. We'll get it to the fire department. Given the size of the room, it's, it's not a very big room. I mean, it'll have its uses, but we're not hosting weddings there. I mean, I don't see anything getting crazy out of control, but it's something I wanted to make sure we have available for the community. So take it home, review it, we'll get it to you, Steve, so you can take a look at it, and I'd like to be able to...
I think he's got a copy now.
I'm going to read him on this, so.
Let us know then what your thoughts are.
I think we had a question on, unless we answered it, Danielle, the safe room for the tornado.
I think I just changed it to the hallway, though.
Yeah, we put the bathroom hallway, but I think that's not a good place to have them take cover if there would be a tornado.
Bathroom, it's the bathroom. I don't really know a tornado safe room out there.
True.
We got the bunker under the stairs.
I can't get in there.
What? I know.
They can't get there.
They can't get there.
I'll let everybody in.
It must be good ratio, we shouldn't see a tornado, come on.
That's true, that's stronger now, too. All right. Ryan will ask if that's one more thing we review and have ready for June. Definitely a good start. Are there any questions, any additional questions? Perfect. All right. 13E, mask mandate policy review. This is something we've had standing. I did definitely ask Danielle to leave it on here. I definitely, I would say that the COVID climate has changed, specifically here in Lynn County, in that vaccines are now readily available for anyone who wants them and have been for, I was just, have been for a significant enough time that someone will have reached full immunity, which is the two weeks past their second shot. Additionally, the CDC, they're, they're just on it with our meetings. They must time them perfectly, release new guidelines today, that anyone who is fully vaccinated can safely be unmasked indoors in small environments, especially since we can still socially distance as well. So I personally, tonight, would like to ask the council to take action to remove the mask mandate here in City Hall. We will leave other protections in place, such as our Plexiglas. Staff obviously still has the option, but I want to make our space as accessible to our public as we can. So whether that be effective immediately, or I think June 1st would be a sufficient date as well, again, that gives even that more time for anyone who wants the vaccine to be able to make that appointment or walk in. There are walk-in clinics now, so it's definitely readily available. Discussion on that.
Are you guys happy with that?
I feel like people can make their own decisions about whether or not they feel comfortable.
I'll make a motion that effective June 1st. We will eliminate our mask requirement.
Motion by Schatz? Second by Bozenberg? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. 13F, we are getting there, we're getting there, we're getting there. Sidewalk payments. This has also come up on a couple of our agendas. We had two different sidewalk projects, one when Ruthheart Street was put in, and another when we extended the sidewalk down Roosevelt. For the most part, those have been handled. We've got two outstanding that still have a balance. We sent them letters in 2020, just asking that we kind of recalibrate their payment plan, or they can pay the balance in full, or we can send it to their taxes. And while we were able to accomplish most, these are the two outstanding that either didn't return the form or have not kept up with those payments. And so now that payment plan that we established is not sufficient, it's not going to catch up with their balance. So we have talked to both of them, well, at least the one that I know of. We'll make sure to talk to the other one. And what I would propose, so those, the, they have five years from when the project was completed to pay off this. And again, by missing some of those payments, that original plan is no longer sufficient. So I would ask that we approve this revised payment plan for these two particular properties, which will ensure that if they continue with this plan, they will have their balance paid off by the end of this year, which is what would have been their due date. I will also ask council, because this has been an ongoing issue of them not complying with the payment plan, that should they miss any payment, we just immediately take that to taxes. I would like that to be part of any kind of discussion or decision tonight, and they will be notified as of such. Are there any questions on this particular item? It's been out there for a while, so. Perfect. Well, if not, I will seek a motion to approve the proposed sidewalk payment plans, along with the contingency that any missed payments, the remainder balance will immediately be reported to the Lynn County Recorder. Is it the reporter? Treasurer, thank you.
I would like to make that one.
Motion by Trump.
Whatever you said was good.
Second by Bozenberg. I don't tee them up for you, I got no problem with that. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Last item on in their old business are nuisance abatements. I don't think we have anything printed, so I will recognize our clerk.
I was going to get more information gathered, and I did not have time. So this is what you have, just kidding, sorry. We're continuing to look at the properties that need assistance, work for nuisance abatement. I mean, we do have one resident here, I don't know if you want us to speak about that, because it's your fault, that item, so I don't have a lot of direction.
I will recognize Mr. Swol.
Well, anyway, we've made some pretty serious progress. We got the lice on and now we have to get a plumber to hook the gas up and then structural engineer and for the little house anyway, and then we're going to move on to the shop.
What's the address of the house? Two thirty.
Two thirty-five.
Okay, thank you. And that one, we had sent a letter on as an abandoned property. The last letter, I believe, stated that it needed to have a building permit pulled within sixty days. Was that permit pulled for the electrical, you said?
Well, the only permission we've got so far is just for the electricity.
Was that through Lynn County, you know?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, the gas is the same company, but they need a permit for the plumbing and all.
Appreciate the update. So I do know we have two other properties as abandoned right now, so we will continue to pursue those, because those, I do not believe any action has been taken.
Do you have a timeframe here when you think you'll have this done?
Well, the major problem.
Plenty of time.
Well, I don't know, sixty days went by pretty fast. The son-in-law, fifty years old, that's Sanders husband, had a heart attack and five bypasses and he was our main worker, so. And then I tried to hire somebody else and he cut two fingers off on his saw. I could almost write a book.
You might want to.
Don't touch it. I wouldn't put that in your advertisement. Kids out of sneers.
To be clear, the sixty days was to pull the permit.
Correct.
Yeah, so not necessarily to complete the work. So at that point, the permit is, the timeline is based on the permit, which I think is, they're generally told on permits. So Lynn County will keep track of that timeline.
Do you want to speak at all about intentions for the shop while you're here?
What's that?
Do you want to speak at all about, you said you were going to work on the shop next. Do you want to speak at all about what your intentions are for that?
Well, we're just going to do the same thing with this, it's a little house, just update everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would say we need to continue to pursue the other two abandoned properties because nothing's been resolved with them and as mentioned, the sixty days goes by fast, so.
And I would do work on that and have more than just this, than the next, like your patience.
Any questions on nuisance? And I appreciate you when I call and say, hey, this lawn's really long and you go, uh-huh. Good.
You have many of those yet?
Just, I've seen one.
It's the most.
Partially.
Yeah, partially, yeah.
We're letting it dry before they bail it. All right. With that, we'll move on to final comments or discussion and I will start with my left. House arrest, anything before we part.
No, thanks for everyone coming out to the open house.
It's official now.
Yeah, it's official, officially official.
I said too much already.
I do want to add one thing. Thank you to Mr. Vincent. He donated two eight-pound parapods, is what I poured it in from. So nobody's on here.
All right. With that, I will seek a motion to adjourn.
Still moving.
Moved by Bozenberg.
Second.
Second by West. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. We are adjourned.